We were down on the list. A whole lot of people weren't ready to move kind of fast and hopefully. Hopefully. Maybe like, yeah, right?
I'm trying to get out of here, girl. I'm down right before the island bridge. Okay. Manhattan Hawk is Barnigan area. Getting into our busy season where you can't, you can't move. Oh, yeah. That Memorial Day, Labor Day. Dr. Arnie used to break last week. He was starting to feel a traffic coming in. I love that. Definitely more activity than normal. Well, funny, I keep getting invoiced for that. Or not invoice that from them, but because we have it. The town sent me very invoicing to pay for them, so. They're going to have to get it from there. For money.
Yeah. Yes.
Yes, I agree, Ray.
You know. In fact, it's been extended there. So here it is. That is why. Or they. They. Yes. Yeah. That's how. We're more happy with your service.
Please rise, salute the flag. The flag is the flag in United States of America. To the honor of the citizens and the nation of America. In this world, we are the best. May the certification of the flag be greater.
The time, date, and location of this meeting is published in the Asbury Park Press Unstuck Ledger and posted on the bulletin board in the office of the town for publication at least forty-eight hours in advance. Public has the right to attend this meeting in reasonable comprehensive minutes. This meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meeting Act.
Thank you, Monica.
Committee of the Asbury. Mr. Wade, Mr. Dymon.
Here.
Mr. Brewster.
Here.
Mr. Flanswell. Chairman Nyman.
Here.
Mr. Rimmer. Mr. Helmer.
Here.
Mr. Beechey. Mr. Yerster.
Is our front testimony before the board, we could have all written it, nothing about it?
Yes.
Practically quite empty, both hanging up.
Okay, so we do have some resolutions that we have to pass, but we have to hold on?
Yes, it looks like Mr. Brewster, Mr. Nyman, and Mr. Helmers can vote on all of them for your reference. And I'll let you know as soon as it goes along. SB twenty-five oh four is a minor subdivision, create three lots.
That was the nine.
Huh?
That was, oh, no, no, that was the phase one. Phase one was the.
Correct. We have Mr. Brewster, Mr. Nyman, and Mr. Helmers who can vote on that.
I'll make a motion to go ahead with the approval that we did with phase one.
All in favor? SB twenty-four forty-four are the same. It's like for daycare.
What would the issue was, Eric, wasn't there something? They had to do that through resolution compliance was.
This, we're not likely to end in that nowhere road.
Yes, we.
What we call big boy road and it's all.
That was the first one.
We reviewed this in quite detail. The subdivision is what Mr. Nyman is referring to is the first one. This one says for the site plan. But we arise to show an indoor in the basement outdoor playground. The approval is only for phase one of the proposed building, which will include all parking sites. Student home, which will be.
Yeah, what's the phase one?
One seventy-nine students. And phase two will require subsequent.
Also to the stuff now.
Okay, so we did that. Now up to the next, SB two four five one, I'll make a motion for that one as well.
We didn't, we didn't do the site plan, we did only the subdivision right before. Mr. Brewster made a motion on the site plan, just now for daycare, twenty-four forty-four. Mr. Helmers seconded it. All in favor on SB twenty-four forty-four?
Aye.
Thank you. The next one is twenty-four fifty-one for five hundred Boulevard is the site plan for office building. Mr. Stern, Mr. Nyman, Mr. Helmers.
I'll make a motion to go ahead with approvals on that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Stern, you can vote on that one as well. The other Mr. Stern could also vote on that one. SB twenty-four fifty-five, site plan exemption, Mr. Yerster, Brewster, Nyman, and Brewster.
Okay, this was for the addition to the show, I'll make a motion to go ahead with that approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. SB twenty-four eighty-eight, new Hampshire investment, this was a subdivision to give a piece of land to the township. We have Meyer, Brewster, Nyman, Helmer, Beechey, and Brewster. There's a lot to be. Thank you. Mr. Meyer moved.
I just have a question on this.
Yes.
Have we said no to this? Would this have squashed the whole, the whole project, because they have nowhere to go out now?
No.
I don't know.
No, like a.
Voice or beyond.
Okay, fine, so all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. SB twenty-four forty-six, our exit of Lake Green, we have Meyer, Brewster, Nyman, Rimmer, Helmer, and Brewster.
Make a motion to, wait a second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
And the last one is SB twenty-four forty-two for high measles, site plan exemption, Meyer, Brewster, Nyman, Helmer, and Brewster.
Cool. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So we have the ordinance first before we have the public hearing?
Yes, we have ordinance for review. This is a resolution from the committee that are with close numbers, two thousand and twenty-two dash twenty-five. It is an amendment to the UDO regarding the required setback corner lots that have two front yard setbacks. You do have a copy of the ordinance, and I believe Mr. Gold can explain the rationing.
It's having on the screen too, if you want to look up there.
Yes, if you look at it, this is changes as identified in the ordinance, twenty-two twenty-two dash oh two two five. This has come up recently at a couple of zoning board hearings where we've had applicants come in. Pools, what they, you know, they'll have dual frontages. And right now, you have accessory structure, you have to abide by both front yard setbacks. This is simply saying on the secondary frontage, they can use the accessory side or a setback, or the side or setback versus front.
So the way I understand this, if someone wants to put a pool in their backyard, they live on a corner.
Right.
So up until now, they had to go fifteen feet from their, from their, at least fifteen feet, or even more, forty feet.
More, I'm sure.
Front yard even bigger. So now we're making it just to the regular side yard in the backyard.
Correct.
I am all for this, I think this makes a lot of sense. So, does anyone have a question?
I do, I, I have an issue, and I think that this is maybe where zoning board applying for, I think, a variance. But there may be issues where you, to me, the front yard, let's say the front of the house faces one road, the side facing another road. But it could be a form of the side of that front, even though the guy, the guy does his house, it's one to one road. His side of one is facing another road, but now he has something very, very cool inside. And what's called a side yard setback was a way to this problem.
Mr. Rager, what, what you're expressing is exactly where the tension and the balance is with this type of circumstances. Mr. Nyman is saying, well, if that's their side yard, effectively, they should be able to use this. That's why I go through the expense and inconvenience of going through his own board application. And your school thought is, well, wait a minute, one side does not fit all, and that's why they have variances. So we want to make sure there's order in the neighborhood, that there's appropriate setbacks depending on what they're doing, and that's what the board of adjustment is for. So if you have a corner lot, it's a little different, and we want to make sure that the board reviews it before we just give you a blank slate to do whatever you want. Not whatever you want, but within the setbacks. So there are two competing thoughts. Most of the towns that I do applications in, they, they hold on to it so the board of adjustment can, can take it. But on the other side of the coin is it's expensive.
It's neighboring a neighbor, it's neighboring a sidewalk. Corner of, I'll just use any corner as an example, you know, fourteen street and Cedar. His house, let's take his house, right there.
For example.
Maybe his house. So if he puts it on the side of fourteen street, there's no neighbor there that's going to be affected by it. Yeah, people walking on fourteen street, there's screaming pools, but no one's affected by going to a fifteen, fifteen foot setback as opposed to a forty.
So why don't you go to the accessory side yard setback standard for all our front yards?
No, this front yard, front yard is a fine answer, look, front yard, look, no one's doing.
These are front yards. If, if you, if you make a go, if you, if you can, you can. I understand, of course, and, and maybe there's something, maybe there's something, yes, there's something, you know, if you modify this potential ordinance, but just to get the point, try to, I think this. At my.
Yeah.
What we, we don't get many ordinances from the township, what's the justice of this?
I think that there's been recent applications that have, I've seen a couple recently where people have come in, they've had to get ball creative from board of adjustment because they'll be on a corner lot, the principal frontage will be, will be one street. Secondary frontage will be over here, and you want to put the pool back in the corner. And the applicants are getting tripped up on a still front yard setback, even though it's a secondary frontage, even though, you know, the house practically speaking, it comes to the road. And I think the author of this, who wrote it, is willing to make it easier for prospective applicants.
Aye.
I, I just, John said it's up to the boards. It may be too easy, I don't know.
Is our vote recommendation what's like?
I believe it's recommend, just a recommendation.
It's, it's, right, and, and Ally has a, a resolution that, that claims about A, B, or C, I, I never really saw that before, I don't really remember, but.
The UDO provides that.
So this is, this is exactly, if you look at the resolution, they came with it. So they, they gave us a menu here where it goes.
I don't see the menu on that, let me go.
There we go. The township committee refers to amendment to the UDL for review and recommendation, the planning board is authorized to prepare a report. Identify that the planning board is not transmitted within thirty-five days, the committee shall be relieved of requirement to obtain a planning board report. It doesn't have the other two things. So if, if the, the planning board shall identify any provisions within the proposed amendment to the UDL that are inconsistent with the township's master plan recommendations concerning those inconsistencies, or you could say it's okay. So if you say it's okay, then they just have the endorsement from the planning board, and it has a couple of consequences. If the planning board says no, then you need a super majority of the committee, and the committee has to give its reasons. Where the planning board says it's okay, then the board is not a vote, then it's just a simple majority. So it has a little nuance.
Is it directed to speak four out of five versus three out of five?
I, I don't know what the number is for quark, for a super majority of the quark for the, this probably. They throw out the four.
Terry, what's the, so what I'm hearing is, we've got this corner and a pool instead of a maybe forty feet from the subservient street, could be as close as fifteen.
I put a corner lot up here, so.
Those corner lots, that's not a good lot.
Well, just tell me the.
There's no backyard over there, everything is the side.
Well, I, I just randomly zoomed in on somewhere in Lakewood. Because there's corners on every.
Can you see the road in fourteen, but it's going to happen on those tunnels?
It won't, because they can't put it on the side of their house, they want to put in the back.
Not necessarily a pool, they could put a shed.
Right, so that, that was my, my question.
I could tell you.
Because of the way it's written, it could be any accessory.
But we've seen that the zoning board is not the typical R seven five or ten.
No, it's at least in our.
These are like our fifteen.
Our fifteen, our four. This is like Arlington area, we have our fifteen and our twentys.
We had one where the secondary road was, you know, it's a larger one. It's not, you know, these.
Right, it's on singles.
Yeah, so it's there practically, somebody would not necessarily want to put a pool there, if it is a high density lot because.
Okay, so we have it, we have.
What if it was, is it cost, is there a climbing on the zoning board, was it this kind of application?
The problem is, and, and doing representing applicants, it's frustrating because you have two front yards you have to meet, so, and especially when you're going to build a house, you have to set it back for the full suburb. And the board almost always gives the variances, and in the meantime, you're seven thousand dollars in application, and attorney, and the engineer, and everything, then you have to go up with, you know, create, the neighbors complain. It's, it's hard, it's a big burden. So probably whoever reports this, like Mr. Nyman's school thought on this is extremely, make it easy, give some, you know, certainty and rights to it, as opposed to, you know, the random process.
I'm fine, I, because we have a board and everyone has an opinion, it's perfect. So, does anyone have any other questions on this ordinance? I'll entertain a motion on this ordinance.
I'll make a motion to John.
You have a second?
There being no second, going once, going twice, the motion fails.
I'll make a motion to approve this ordinance.
Second.
Take a roll.
Just for clarification, this is not to approve the ordinances to.
It's to recommend the township to vote on the summonses.
I, take a roll on this, because there, there's, you know, I don't know where everyone else is.
Mr. Nyman?
Yeah.
Mr. Stern, Mr. Brewster?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Rimmer? Mr. Helmers? Mr. Wyssner?
Yes.
Okay, so it's four, it's four votes, so the recommendation is to the committee that this is consistent with the master. So Ally, do you, do you correspond, do you want to do it?
Yep, I always do.
Okay. All right, we have number, I have number one on the public hearing.
This is SB twenty-four fifty-three, it's a major site plan for a synagogue with a rabbi's residence on Vine Avenue.
Just one question on that, I know this is the second time they're here.
Yes.
Some, I just want to ensure that all members are here, the first time, I mean now.
Mr. Rimmer, did you have an opportunity to, to watch the recording?
I did.
Yes. Okay, and I have the Mr. Meyer, Mr. Brewster, and Mr. Nyman, Mr. Helmers, and Mr. Wyssner.
So we can all, okay, right.
So then, Mr. Nyman listened to the recording. I'm sorry, Mr. Rimmer listened to the recording. Thank you.
Okay. Adam.
Three weeks to turn, Adam, I prefer to turn the app, the applicant. This is the board mayor called before the board, we had a lively conversation, we're a comment to the public, we're a comment to the board. Based upon those comments, we, we favor the application, so we can go back and revise any plans and see what we can do to resolve some of the issues. As a result of that, we have submitted a revised plan, we made the building a little bit smaller, we added a lot of iron stuff, that too, as we address some of the comments. Just trying to check what exhibits we had last time. Amen. We'll remark the exhibits, but at this time, if we can swear in Mr. Flannery, see if he has any wanting proof, the revised plan that exists.
You swear a firm testament, I think, before this board with the truth, all due to nothing but.
I do, Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer, professional planner. I have copy of sheet one oh nine of the X map, which shows the subject lot on the corner of Oak Street and Vine Avenue. I have a new rendering, which is a colored rendering, showing the revised plan. The revisions were, A, we made the building smaller so we no longer need a height variance. The building was shifted as far to the east as we could to provide a little more buffer to the west. And easement was secured from the property owner to the west so that buffering could be planted on his property on the opposite side of the fence. And the entrances have been made smaller and restricted to one way to put the traffic.
So really appreciate you with that.
So the, the application, as indicated, through shul at very busy intersection. The Lakewood, and I went through the groups last night, Lakewood needs the shul. If you put it in a quiet residential neighborhood, it kind of doesn't fit there either. So the applicant works with both property owners that are impacted by these setback variances. We provided sufficient parking, it's a permitted use, and we do have a new report, dated April twenty-fifth. It, it just details the fifteen parking spots that we have. The plan was not marked to say that the building height was reduced, but the, the testimony is that the building height will be reduced and will comply with thirty-five feet.
Are the line will comment, Ryan, in the letter talks about the exits?
Yeah, RV's request was to make the exit a little smaller, and, and we will comply with the recommendations and report. If the board acts favorably, will satisfy all, all of the other comments.
Will they prohibit the left turns on the line, which is the recommendation?
That, that is correct.
Okay, I'm just going to ask, if you could just show me the in and out of the parking lot and what street it's on, so.
Well, the entrance would be from Oak Street, and it would be a right out only exit on to Vine Avenue, which brings out with the traffic.
Excellent. Did we discuss the second floor?
We, we did discuss, and the windows would be, the incident were, were somehow restricted. Right, somehow restricted, so that it restricts the visibility for the.
Excellent. Anyone from the board have any questions on this application?
We should point to what the variances are still.
Uh, the variances as, as listed in Terry's report of April twenty-fifth. Front yard setback is required from Vine Avenue of twenty-two point five feet, or thirty feet is required. A memory rear yard setback is required.
Twenty-two or thirty on long. Can you show us where the.
Oh, oh, the front, front setback from Vine is, is twenty-two instead, instead of thirty. We have rear setbacks as the front of the building fronts, oh, we have a rear setback, it's ten to the building. This, and you just talked about corner lots, this is a corner lot, so this is really like a side. Uh, this, and you just talked about corner lots, this is a corner lot, so this is really like a side, ten feet would comply with the side, doesn't comply with the rear. In addition to the building being within ten feet, the landings, which are permitted in a side, are not permitted in rear. So that makes it that it's a five-foot setback to the landing.
So, and what's the, is there a house on the other side of that?
Yes, and that's a side that we're able to get an easement on from the neighbors. He probably concerns, well, this name, I think the name was yours, I said it last night, if they were acceptable, well, with the shul, what happens if they sell it and now the next owner or third down, down the road? They're agreed to get easement on that side, so we can get, I'm there, sorry, so we can go ahead and just take a look at the property.
And the easement is in the rear, or on the north, or on the top?
On neighboring property or.
Lot nine.
It would be lot eleven.
From behind.
Correct.
Uh, the building height is eliminated, we're going to comply with thirty-five.
This is what, what, what?
Right, this is the northwest corner of the intersection?
It is the, yes, northwest corner.
Was it?
Yes, it is the northwest corner. And what might be a little confusing is the plans that are oriented everywhere.
That's, okay, hello, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
But, you know, we confuse the board a little, sometimes it helps, and this is just.
This is.
Bamboozle. So Oak is up and down, Vine is left and right.
Yeah, I didn't draw the plan, so I'm not doing any bamboozle here.
So what, what, what number three, do you, do you have, and I wonder if you're showing the back over here?
Yeah, yeah, the, the, the rear yard setback is to lot eleven. And as Adam indicated, we have a buffer easement, a long lot, lot eleven. So that's something that will be permanently buffered. Uh, lot, no.
How big is lot eleven?
Uh, ninety by one hundred and thirty-four.
How big is the easement?
It is a ten-foot buffer.
Are the number of parking stalls associated with it, or do you increase the parking stalls?
Same, same, if fifteen was compliant with the ordinance required.
Didn't you have, are, are some of the parking stalls still?
Yeah, parallel, parallel is front of the building, yeah.
So, if it ever snows, maybe that works, but, I don't know. This is the end of cul-de-sac, like, but, you know, I'm not, this is like, really. It's like, it's a concern of, it's snowing, there's school buses on Oak, you know, that. And people are backed up trying to get in the shul, and they're sticking out, and the bus can't get around, and screaming kids, chaos.
Like, you're presenting a scenario where it's snowing, and the snow is so deep in the parking lot, that the vehicles can't get in, but not enough that the buses can.
I don't know, the buses, I'm assuming that Oak is the buffer, but when you foul a parking lot, that. Shop right parking lot, you foul a parking lot, you got to put the snow somewhere, you're going to keep the snow somewhere. And along, you're going to lose three or four parking stalls all along the front of the building.
Well, there, there is, uh, areas to the side where if they get a responsible, uh, person doing the snow clearing, that they have places where the snow will be provided.
Respectfully, we provided the parking that's required based upon the ordinance, I understand their concern, but the ordinance doesn't read scenario of snow, scenario of snow stuff.
Do you leave her?
Could you go back to the variance, I'm just trying, just work it through a few. There's ten feet on neighboring property, what happens if family wants to, they, there's no way.
No, it's easement, we're in purpose of reading, uh, the reason why this was, came up. This neighbor did come and is in support of the shul, I indicated that last time. The concern was, I think, I forget which board member indicated, okay, that's great, but what happens if he's no longer there, he sells it? The concern would be, we've been talking about getting as many buffers we can to commercial type buildings, and putting the shul, cars getting in and out. So we said, well, if we know that they're going to get a buffer from that neighbor, they're going to know, they're, no one, they're not noticed, um, forever. And two, they also were able to get that extra privacy, that they know that nothing's ever going to encroach on that ten feet on their side. And then we have another, uh, ten feet to the building, but five feet to the stairs on our side.
So let's take that. If I could, chairman, just one thing, the easement is going to be shown, right?
Yes.
So it's going to run with the property.
With our resolution compliance, that information will be submitted to your office, okay?
Perfect. Thank you.
What happens if someone of that property then comes to this sub living area, ninety-four, I thought?
Again, that's the reason why.
So is that going to be, could that be used for a lot of it?
Yes, yes, yes.
When you can't go with it, it can be.
I just think you can't go, but it could be used for a lot of it, and he's going to count it as part of.
And it's side setback.
It's part of the side setback, side setback.
Yeah, basically.
But you couldn't go, you could not seek to encroach on it.
He can't put a driveway in it, he can't put a, he can't put footsteps or, uh, walks in.
It is, it's, it's permanent, it's there, and there's nothing going to go, it's a ten feet.
The height of board is sealed. Would we, we had it at, uh, I think it's thirty-eight and a half, so we took three and a half feet out of it, a little over a foot.
So what, there was a attic?
It's going to be floor to ceiling height. Set at nine foot four to eight.
Oh, usually you have ten-foot ceilings, not three.
Yeah, there you have it, nine-foot ceilings, yeah.
So, on the building plan, this is a question, the fifteen spots are based on fourteen eighty-two square feet, for main sanctuary, right?
That is correct.
If the areas that are marked as, I think closer, there's two areas marked as upstairs, you would add in those four hundred square feet to sanctuary. What would the parking have to require?
Uh, another four parking spaces.
Are these real rooms, or these partially marked up?
They're, they're going to be real rooms. And as, as mark resolution compliance, the board will have to make sure we comply with the board professionals, and we comply with the parking, and whatever needs to be done to accommodate it.
But that is not bigger than the.
Mr. Flannery, I, I have on the conditions, the easement shall be set forth on the adjoining lot, provided buffer area shall be set forth in a recorded instrument. What lot are we talking about?
Lot eleven.
Lot eleven, so do you have the permission of the owner of lot eleven to do that?
Yes.
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, twenty-foot wide?
Ten-foot wide.
Can you talk about? Question about the accuracy of our meeting in terms of space, what are you interpreting as the main sanctuary?
Well, the main sanctuary, as pulled out on the plan, is just under fifteen hundred square feet. The plans that get submitted will have to provide a legitimate fifteen hundred square foot sanctuary.
The plan that's in the set has something adjoining the main sanctuary space, was that a boat, oyster? Easy.
It's like a library.
Okay, is that part of the sanctuary per se?
If there's a wall, it's not necessarily.
Is there a wall?
The wall's shown on.
Is that a wall, or is that?
There's no wall.
It doesn't show.
The, the, the plans that are submitted for review will have to show a wall to show that it complies with the definition of the ordinance, so what sanctuary?
Does that work? Do you have one, oh, you have two exits, you have one over here.
Yep.
You have two exits. Is that, Brian, is that a wall?
Uh, it is now.
It is now, yes. Brian, can you hear me?
That's one?
Thank you. One last question I have, Brian, I think I heard testimony that you know all the seating and like variants.
That is correct.
We had identified our interpretation was the height appeared to be thirty, thirty-six point five feet.
We're reducing, and we're reducing the floor to ceiling heights, and we'll provide those plans during resolution.
All right, thank you.
We did make sure that on the resolution, they have had, that the resolution plan, so we made sure it's fourteen eighty-two on for planner.
Yeah, that's right, the resolution approval will indicate sanctuaries, fourteen eighty-two. The sanctuary has to be large, the fourteen eighty-two.
By, yeah, the resolution plan will present it.
That's what was discussed.
We can set by fourteen eighty-two square feet.
Uh, remaining, uh, relief that's required is the maximum building coverage, we're at twenty-six point six, where twenty-five is allowed. Uh, there was a signed setback variance, we're eliminating the signs, we don't need a signed setback variance. Uh, and we're looking for relief for the twenty-foot buffer, and we're providing landscaping expenses, uh, to provide the intent of the ordinance with respect to landscaping and buffering, which impacts the two lots. And the applicant has reached out to those, if anyone.
Okay, so, one last question, Adam, you make a good point. Parking complies, but I recall from the last presentation that we kind of acknowledge this is drawing people from the south, drawing people from the north. Ain't nobody walking, so.
Well, I think we had testimony last time that there were people.
Okay.
The testimony from the public, and, and the board concerned the open.
If, if more than fifteen people drive, practically speaking, where are they parking? Is there any off-street parking in this area?
They have to park in one of the school parking lots, if it's at a time when the schools aren't being used, but.
How, how close?
The tenants that are coming here are regular, who are to know the situation, they're going to know when they have to walk, and they'll know when they, when they.
How close is the nearest school?
Uh.
Drive. Drive, they're not close.
Drive is three hundred feet away.
For any.
That's right.
Yes.
So the buffer's supposed to be twenty feet, you don't, what, what are the buffers, are any of those, what are they?
Well, we, we have a ten-foot setback, but we have stairs, so there's, there's five, but then we have to count on these joining properties. So it's fifteen to twenty on, on the other side, uh. We have thirteen.
My sense is that, that our shouldn't be violated, I think the twenty-foot buffer is for the neighbors, for the neighbors. Part of the back goes, you know, you have a staircase, it's like on the third door, down to the second door, I think it's. With all due respect, I think it's obvious in, uh, the staircase, you know, I think that if you, like trees in the back, that would really affect that, quite a bit, property, bodies will go back. So if you use that staircase, I think that would be much better.
So the, the answer to the, uh, the landings on the yellow boards, those are put in there for safety reasons, if, if the board feels that, that those are, I think, the word you use was ugly. Uh, they, we would remove them from the plan, and then, and we would provide.
What safety, what safety is?
Well, it's, it's just another way out, if something happens.
It's not going down, it's just going to the second floor, it's not going to the.
Well, it goes, it goes all the way down, all the way down.
Was that changed in the last proof, or it only gone to the side?
And, and if, so if the board feels it's, it's something that's actionable, we remove it, the applicant just indicated it does not come down, if they get to the third floor, to the second, to give them alternate access.
The rap I need that I'm not, I just think it should be, should plant our provides.
Basically, we would plant our provides.
Let's go down. Any other questions?
That's double spaced, double spaced our provides. But that would be in the.
Or, or. On our side.
That's along the same place where the easement is, correct?
Yes.
Things are outstanding, correct?
These will be on our side.
So just so the board's clear, is there a recommendation asked to plan? I thought I heard double.
Three, three giant arm bodies, six to eight foot, a double road, six foot on center.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application?
Six, six feet three five, eight to six feet on center.
Six, six to eight foot high, six feet on center.
Double.
Double, double.
Just come up on the terminal form you went, and then you can state your name.
Chair, this is great, right hand, do you affirm that the testimony will give you four, the court will give you the.
Um, stop testimony, go to the ground, Senator, I'll tell you the truth, yes.
Do you affirm?
I affirm.
Please state your name, and then with the chairman's permission, please direct your comments to the board.
Sure, yeah, I know, sure. Um, I don't, I live on seven sixty-one Cypress, not far from the proposed area. I just don't understand the left turn coming into the proposed property, right now. If the, I, I just don't understand how it's going to work, with currently children walking to school, and their safety.
The left turn into.
Into the parking on front Oak Street. And there's a double line also to the left turn as well, to that, so, how, how.
Someone is going to, going east on Oak Street, they're going to be making a left turn into.
East to the shul, correct?
Right, for the intersection.
Right, for the intersection, so.
I don't think, I don't understand how it's being addressed, as well as the court backing up on the, the, on that left turn, on some, to one.
Well, at those lines, it's, there's no left turn out of the parking lot.
No, no, on, from Oak to Vine. Because we want two things going on on the corner. We want the entrance into the shul, and we want left turns from Oak Street to Vine Street. Does that, my, my understanding is correct?
Isn't there a left lane, is a.
Right, we want to traverse that lane, want to go over that lane into the shul, I don't, I don't, how far back is this?
Is there a left, there's no left, is, when you're coming up.
When you're traveling east of Oak Street.
Is there a left?
To the left turn on.
There's a left turn later, going on to one.
Sure.
Chairman, I did pull up the traffic study as well, which said that left turns into the side driveway from Oak Street are anticipated to operate at a level of service A. The anxiety movements are just eight levels of.
Wow, I understand these comments, this is a, the board has accepted the professionals' report, uh, there's no, there's no court controversy that, that, that's taken, I just like it on the record.
Thank you.
A professional report that's been just accepted by the board.
And, and an explanation of the level of service A turning in, that means that once the car finally gets there, and we all know Lakewood, you don't get there quickly, but when it gets there, you'll be able to turn quickly, because there's a traffic lane.
My concern is probably the students walking east or.
Oh, someone really crosses a little, they cross by the light, okay?
They're, they're walking to school.
Right, so they cross that light.
But if someone's trying to get in. There are many schools on, on, on Oak Street, a lot of, not schools. But wait for some walking on the street. I just want to make sure that everything is being, you know, thought out, that, that everybody's managed. You know, if it would be a right turn, then why is it? A right turn on Oak Street, the, the first of it's more visibility, and the, and people, the kids, whoever's walking would see that car, get down that direction.
Terry, what is the law, if you have a double yellow line, can you turn left across a double yellow?
The double yellow doesn't, probably the party movements, or it's passing. In other words, if you have a double yellow line.
We can't pass.
You can't pass someone who may be.
But you can't take a left across.
You can make a left, right.
Is that a double or a single? Is that a double or a single? It's a double.
Double, it's a double.
Is it double yellow? It's a double yellow.
Double yellow.
Okay.
So I was asking, can, is that a left turn illegal?
Oh, apparently it is. So the left turn to the line?
So if you're coming from Route 9, you're going east on Oak, not toward all the schools. So what you're saying is, is to take a left into the shule.
Correct.
Before the intersection. So that line, the little road, is a double yellow. I was wondering, is that because it's illegal?
Oh, I'm not, I'm, I'm just working on the flow of traffic into the shule. It's supposed to, with regards to the children walking. Okay, here. Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. I researched that a long time ago because I always talk to the driver's end, you couldn't make a left across a W on. I just find that prohibited. And Google agrees with, this isn't the... Actually, I don't agree with that because how many places are there where you've got a double line and you have a right? I say you can't pass. Which doesn't make sense.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense.
It doesn't address it. That to me means it's not prohibited. And that was what my research. So I was like, could not, years ago, I researched it and I could not find anything to prohibit it. Maybe if you go ask somebody in the side of the side of the wall.
Yeah, we know from 70, that where you are, is that where?
If it makes any difference, I do it all the time. All right. Okay. Anyone else in the public wish to be heard? Sir, please raise your right hand. Do you affirm the testimony before this court with the truth or hold you to nothing?
My name is Moshe Rubinson. I spoke last time at the meeting regarding the safety. The applicant chided and mocked the safety claims. Now I just want to speak about the neighbors that are supposedly that there was an agreement with. None of them are happy with the edifice, this large edifice in their backyard. This is being done, they're...
He's giving a, we understand that. He's not representing anyone, he's representing himself.
Talking to that neighbor in front of the orders, their comments. Yes, the comments, we went into his, his opinion, and he's not the house next door. He's no comment you may have. That neighbor couldn't get up and speak all their life.
Sure.
Thank you.
With all, with respect to the 15 parking spots, the board knows good and well, the entire area there is parking spot free. As far as Chi goes, no one can park at Chi. They don't let people park there unless you get special permission. No one's going to be parking in any of the schools. They're very far down, including Tashbar, Public School, the closest girl's school is, it's far away. There is no parking there. There are about seven spots on a, on a trash pickup day. If you count all the spots from the, from the trash, all the way down to Lakewood Commons, there are about 10 spots. If you don't block anybody's driveway, mailbox, and fire hydrant. Where are they parking? They're, they're pretending that it's not, it's not a problem. This is a serious, severe problem that's going to affect the entire Cypress and it's going to affect Vine Street. The, the, on the east side of Vine, that's a buffer zone. There's no place to park there. Kids walk up and down from Lakewood Commons. There's no sign over there. That's instead of a sign. So there's no, there's no spots. As far as walking, we were told, the applicant's son got up and said that Hasidin don't drive, which inherently refuted if you look at the parking lot. It's, what are they going to Uber to the, to the spot? We're not talking about Chavas, we're not talking about Yom Tov. The fact of 15 spots is kind of a farce for a building that size and...
Yeah, but, but isn't ordinance that they're following? The ordinance clearly states that for a sanctuary of 1,500 square feet, or this is a little less, 15 spots meets the ordinance. And it's possibly right. I would, I would do that is go to the township and say, I have to revise your ordinance, your ordinance is wrong. But as far as this application goes, 15 spots is what the ordinance requires now. If there are 50 people coming to show where they do park, I have no clue where they park.
So then, so that everybody around is going to have to pay for that, for that structure. That's what, that's what's happened. Every single neighbor, and you're going to block up the entire Cypress because two vehicles cannot get by. Now, what happened on Spruce Street, where in the morning you cannot have two vehicles, you're going to have on Cypress and the buses go up and down. I'm not even dealing with safety, which I dealt with partially last time. That's, that's an ongoing issue. I think that it's being ignored, this entire thing, and we're going to pay the price after the building is ready up. And usage of the building, nobody guarantees how much building is going to be used.
Will guarantees how much is going to be used?
No, meaning, meaning, words can be said, meaning that it'll be like this and like that, but anybody, you can, the building can be used in any number of ways throughout the day. Don't forget, this is a, you've got a Mika there, six in the morning, 11 o'clock at night, you have, you have a building that's going to be used for all kinds, all types of things. You have a, any kind of occasion, right? You can have 50 people, you have 50 cars. What are, what are we doing? These are, it's a real concern. It's a concern that's going to have consequences of importance, so...
Thank you very much. Sir, please raise your right hand. Do you affirm the testimony before this court with the truth or hold you to nothing? Do you affirm?
My name is Manakun Torzky.
Sir, you have to say yes when you affirm.
Yes.
Okay. Please state your name.
Manakun Torzky. First of all, I have to apologize.
And your address?
What?
And your address?
Brooklyn 1221 44th Street.
He's the one moving upstairs.
Yeah, fine, I just, I just wanted to make sure of understanding. I didn't pick up on the word. Thank you. I apologize.
No problem. Thank you very much. I apologize for my English if it's not well. I'm not such a good speaker in English. First of all, let's thank all the owners come to be in Hasidim, and I'm special thanking the board, even for last time's board meeting also. I came last time, I came a little bit late, and I was really, really disappointed the way it was, it went, not for the outcome, the way it went and the way we was not understanding each other. Two days before the meeting, meeting was a Tuesday, two days before the meeting, Sunday, we set up a meeting with the neighbors. I thought it was going to be only with immediate neighbors, but it came 10 to 12 neighbors. I wasn't ready for that. I wasn't expecting that, and I didn't know what goes to fly, what goes on. And these two days, it was like nothing to do. Right after the meeting, called over, I called the builder, the name is Shiny Griminger, and I told him, I need a meeting right away with immediate neighbors. This is things, there is things, but I could try to address and I could try to help. There is things, like you said before, this is the town's responsibility, and if I follow the rules, I follow the rules. What could I do more? I can't guarantee anything. Sitting with them, I met in Rabbi Ezra Holmes Hofs, he's right in the back of Cypress, right in the back of the shule. I must say, he's a brilliant, he's a multi-personal guy. The way he took me, even the first time, when it wasn't all against me, after the meeting, he was like, back with friends, like, let's see, let's go. I can't wait to be his neighbor, in other words. And we discussed it, and I understand he wasn't excited for the whole shule. I understand that, and I, I admire him. I know, I know, I know the low and down. But we came together, we tried to move the, as, as the guy said here, we tried to move this matter, the shule is passable, hard to bind. We'll try to address Mr. Mastak also, and we tried to address the windows. And we froze the windows and we, we hide, the opening will be higher at the level, high level. We tried to address the issue, we're going to build, we're going to plant trees in my side, not regular trees, high trees, should be between me and Rabbi Ezra Combs. I thank my friend Rabbi Kramer, who's the owner of the next lot, who gave away the buffer zone. Because mid now, I'm, I'm rebuilding, I'm constructing the house, because I'm going to live till the building finishes. I'm going to live, I'm going to gain rent, not free, but I'm, I'm getting it, and he's a true friend, and he tries to help that too. We did, we tried to address the parking, the, the, the traffic issue, the right turn, the right turn, we sit with them, it's only a right turn, we did whatever possible, it's the Chi. We're not making a munions, we're not making a sin cause of. As far I know, men do not use a Mika 11 at night. They're using it from six to eight to 10, whatever, whatever they like. It's not a munions and a roll. And it will be, I did everything possible, what it is, and I hope you will approve it, and I'll be grateful to go together since the serve. Rabbi Ezra Combs is here, and he could face his hand, that we agree what I said, please.
Okay.
And the senior neighbors, we talked, we get together.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else in the public wish to be heard? Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm the testimony before this court with the truth or hold you to nothing?
Thank you.
Please state your name.
Moshe Sturals. And it's true, it didn't leave the neighbors. It took care of the immediate neighbor's issue. But what I understand is nothing was done as far as the safety or the parking. The safety is still a very, very tough, just to eat what they said already. Coming off east, cars falling into the traffic lights, trying to make a left, cars going down all directions, children walking and biking, a lot of them dead. It's in this. And I don't see how it cannot be a massive safety concern. Like I said, traffic that left, a car coming up west, trying to make that green light, that's a pretty scary stuff on my mind, or, or anything. If we could even just get into it right only, right only in from Vine and right only from out from Oak, and that would leave a lot, a lot of problems, which would completely definitely help. I don't think that's possible. There is no parking on Oak and Vine right now. They have to stop parking there and then blocking anything else, it's going to be...
Okay. Thank you.
But it definitely fits, it's not like you can ignore that.
Thanks. Yes. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm the testimony before this court with the truth or hold you to nothing? Please state your name.
Yehoshua Shua.
Your first name?
Yehoshua.
Please spell that.
Y E H O S H U A.
Okay, please.
I live in 69 Road.
Okay.
And I've been in, I've met Chubachon, my son, my wife, we don't, we don't, we don't have license, and we have the shule, we don't have a week, so...
So where do you live now?
69 Road, I'm in...
And you, you plan on walking there?
Um, yeah, down in the, in Chavas, I'm a boxer, I'm a Chubachon, I have the name, and then my son, well...
Oh, so you live in Oak and in that neighborhood there, you plan to walk?
Yeah. So you live in, yeah. Yeah, no, 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 no.
Excellent, thank you. Yes. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm the testimony before this court with the truth or hold you to nothing?
Yes.
Please proceed.
My name is Asher Olaki. I am currently the president of the Amstirke Oasis Lakewood. Amstirke is not the first project we're doing in Lakewood. I mean, people on the ward know me, have done a lot of work, they have a shule on Canal Road, they have a school, they have a trail, they have the one-time Lakewood, 520 James Street, they have a sister on Lake Road. We've built a lot of institutions for a lot of Amstirkes. It's not the first time I'm here, many times. And always, in every situation, there's always a neighbor, two, three, get up and say, it's something's not going to work. Everyone's worried. You built a shule on Canal Road, everyone said, it's impossible, Canal Road is the worst place in the world, no parking, there's no places, no access spaces, four corners said there's not a lot of parking, fourth street, the wall, I said, nobody's allowed parking. But Hashem, we worked it out, we were able to make it work. Where, I'm affiliated with Amstirke since I was nine years old, for the last 40 years, I'm with this rabbi, I'm with this congregation, with these people, for people that we like, we make things work, we're here to make it work.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes.
Do you think it's possible to work with a write-in and write-out only, both on Oak and on Vine?
I think it's a good work. If it works in Canal Road, it could work there.
And Canal Road, you also have a write-in.
Same thing, same exact thing. Canal Road is a lot of hours, and we're proud of them, they go to write-in.
On Canal Line, can you make a left into, into Vine Line?
Yes.
You could make a left.
Rabbi, is yours the one across Barney's?
Yes. No. Mine's a cross on the wall.
What's the wall?
The white, not white wall.
White wall?
After four corners.
Oh, there.
The big white wall.
That's the wrong...
Amstirke.
I know.
Yes, it's all, it's all part of that.
Right. So what's the one on across Barney's and across on his south west that's a school?
Right.
That one, they have people trying to get big block, traffic, half a mile.
They were never picked up, picked up a passing, they were not passing the entire year, so they're not that far either. The one at the school, they were never picked up.
Okay, point, I hear. Thank you. Okay. I think we'll close it to the public. I think we understand the issues here. Adam, if you want to give a closing statement?
I think the board's heard a lot, I just, all of us at the board, we heard the comments. I understand that it's a tight property, it's a new property, a corner property, that we're doing everything we can to make it test. Obviously, safety is a concern for everybody, including us ourselves. We can reassess the board vote in favor of the application.
Yes.
Gary? I don't, there's rules of thumb, but how many congregants would we expect in a sanctuary in Lakewood is 400?
I asked the board, I asked the question with Brian, I thought I had it in my head, I said, there's approximately 60 members, 60 congregants who fit into that 1,500, but Brian, he thinks that's the correct. So that's not a special testimony for me, that's just the...
That feels right.
Mr. Flannery is also a testimony as an architect.
Just where are they going to park? Some are going to walk, some are going to walk. I guess that I gave groups on there, like a couple of...
And everyone's screaming, shops.
Oh, very sweet. I work at shops.
When I take home drivers.
So it's like this, let me, let me tell you something. Let me, let me tell you something. There's 15 parking spots there, so if I'm coming up Oak Street and I look in and I see there's no parking, I'm not going to make that left turn into the parking lot because I see there's no parking. I will figure out where to park, and if I can't figure out where to park, I won't dominate there. I'm not going to dominate there. If I, I know where I go in the morning, I am going to have a spot because otherwise I, I won't dominate. So...
They're going to wrap it.
So...
I'm hearing you.
Okay.
All right, get a wrapping, get a fold, the rabbi.
Okay. I agree, it's not the best. But according to the local ordinance, shules are permitted. Look at that. We don't have to have a variance, we don't have to afford it. I'm just saying that, you know.
Now, the city would want that water from the, that would be in the west, that western side.
We added about three feet to it.
Where is it now? It's supposed to be 20 and what is it?
13.
It's not riding the trees.
I'd like to see it.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion on this application. Can we make... Yes, let's go through all those...
These are the issues that I have. Left turns onto Vine is prohibited, right turn out only. The windows shall be tended to restrict the visibility on the second floor, and they will be set at a higher, set at a higher than high level. The 10-foot wide buffer easement shall be set forth on the adjoining lot 11 to provide a buffer area, and shall be set forth in a recorded instrument. Arbividing must be planted along the back adjacent to the easement. Green giants double stack, six to eight foot, six feet on center.
No, I'm sorry, I was talking to Mr. Jackson.
That there, that there would be a wall between the sanctuary and the main sanctuary.
It's, oh, actually, usually the bookcases are, it's not a wall, I got, you know, in a lot of shuls, the back of the shul is like...
And then twenty years from now, somebody...
Okay. Okay. Oh, can we get that back up again, the conditions?
Ally had a couple that I don't have on, but she's emailing those to me, and she will repeat those.
The building height variance is no longer being requested. The driveway onto Vine will be adjusted as per the recommendations in the review letter. The main sanctuary will not exceed fourteen hundred eighty-two square feet, and to help accomplish that, there will be a wall provided between the altar and the main sanctuary.
No more than how many square feet?
Fourteen eighty-two.
I have the wall. Is that the right way to spell it? Oh, it's a...
R instead of an I, well, that N is an R instead of a I. Okay. So at this point, I'll entertain a motion on this application. So no one's taking a motion? I'll make a motion to approve this application, the right-in, right-out, both on both sides, on Oak and on Vine.
That includes a submission waiver request as well?
That includes a submission waiver request as well.
Is there a second? Is that a second motion?
No, no, I think, I will go.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No seconds?
Well, the board has a duty to make a decision one way or the other, it doesn't have to be tonight, there is a statutory timeframe within which the board must act, it does not, it is considered a, an automatic tool.
Rabbi, I'll just give my...
Yeah.
Yeah, but I believe that the last meeting, they break the time period.
Well, they're not gonna leave there, and I don't think, it'll be a while. And plus, I have to, I have to look into what happens when there's, they hear the case and there's no motion to approve it, but if there's no motion to approve, there should be a motion to deny it.
I'm just giving my two cents, I don't already make a motion at all, but I think, if they're ready, because now that I built a hundred, four is sure, everybody, I think, the reason over here, there's not a park, I think we'll go into parking on the street, they're gonna have to figure it out. I think we have to make an application, whoever that applicant is, they should come with a variance-free application. Over here, there's, there's too much going on over here. There's too much that even if it would be a variance-free application, I want to go to. I've lived in Lake, we're not far from this, I know it was on there on the street, if there is no place to park, it will turn, I think, there will be people parking on the street, I see what happens, I have other shuls that are going to officially park, people are going to move on the street, even when there's no shoulder, and it turns very dangerous. And that's why I think it's important with the variance.
I mean, I'll, I, I'll pipe it, I dominated your shul, my brother-in-law dominated your shul, I wanted to continue talking to me, and that being said, your shul on County Line has a real power parking lot, and it's the most, one of the beautiful shuls in Lakewood, it has a real parking lot. This is quite possibly one of the worst locations to put a shul, in my opinion. And if you're going to agree with Ally, it's gotta be pretty close to variance-free, I just, and the safety, kids walking, I just, it's not in good conscience. It's very hard.
Mr. Stern, I'm trying to make this easy for you. Did you say, I think you said dominate, please forgive my...
My brother-in-law...
Oh, your brother?
My brother-in-law is a member of the shul in the north part, and I have been to his house for showers, I have dominated the shul, I like the shul, I like the people, they were very nice to me.
It doesn't mean this...
I wanna be invited back.
It's a different shoe.
Okay, I misunderstood.
This is the southern branch of the shul with the nice rabbi.
Sir, sir. Okay, and I apologize, Mr. Stern, I just...
No, no, it's, it's, I feel, of all situations, this, this, it's a beautiful, beautiful community, and it just...
So, so how about, how about if you limit it to one minyan for a shahorist, one for minhath, one for martyrs, so...
With respect...
That's your chair, we can divorce that.
I'm forcing you.
Okay.
Does the applicant want to, in light of these developments, regroup and come back with a smaller building?
So, where, where are we holding them?
Well, somebody has to make a motion to, to deny the application, I would have to research what happens when it fails to get a motion to approve, that might be deemed a denial, I have to check that out, I don't know, I haven't heard of that circumstance.
Mr. Jackson, I believe at the last township committee, there was a motion on that Cedar Bridge resolution to be considered, and if I heard correctly from somebody, that the motion on the second reading died because none of the township committee members was going to make a motion.
And I would just say, that's a different...
I'd love to hear what Mr. Pfeffer thinks, but that, that's different, because the committee has no duty to adopt or not adopt a resolution, it's a different, the, this board has to decide cases, but the, the failure to muster a motion to approve might be deemed a failure of the applicant to carry the verdict proof and to get a...
So one of the thirty...
I respectfully disagree, I think we're actually taking the whole motion, not the issues.
Well, my...
The motion dies, it doesn't mean...
Mr. Chairman, can we do this, can we adjourn this matter until the next hearing, so that I might research what happens when there, what the legal consequence is when there's no motion to approve or to deny.
I just, I think, I hear what you're saying, I think Mr. Homack wants to say one thing before we get to that.
I would need more motion to approve, we would expect a buffer, a full twenty-foot buffer on the east side. I think that the shul is a little smaller, the payment is at some parking, no parking ever. And I could, I could, and right-in, right-out, I can...
I think you're gonna do my... The shrink, if you're...
Which means your parking's a man also.
Same as the last...
If they restrict the sanctuary, we come down.
I don't know if they can restrict the body, and other...
Okay, well, so...
Maybe if you shorten this building, it's like...
That's a big, so you give us twenty feet on that side.
It's a lot now. So thirteen, you give a full twenty feet of, between our block and lot nine.
Can we put that up so we can see it over here?
Basically, the reason of this, nobody gives a, to this property.
The name is...
Everybody else did say, but we're, we're fine, we're shorting the building for you.
Mr. Brode has indicated he would prefer to see this in a sketch before there's a vote.
Yeah, I, I'm trying to...
So then we'll bring it back up.
Question about the buffer, Mr. Homack, are you asking for the full twenty feet on their property?
What you have in your, 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 your buffer?
So they're not asking to add it, you say...
Well, what, your property? Right now, we have from the proxy line, the building is thirteen.
Okay, here's a sketch, except one more.
Okay.
And it's like...
How about the other buffer, the other buffer, okay?
Okay.
So what does that do to the interior area?
We will have to make one smaller, right? Or maybe we're gonna expand the size of the sanctuary, sanctuary is not getting too large, the maximum sanctuary is not getting too huge. In fact, it might get smaller, it's not...
I agree with you.
It's not gonna let us park, we sound assuming for the buffer, you just want, even if you , I'm assuming someone's booked for the buffer, you now just want me to book cars in the buffer. If you'd like, I think, I'd love to see if you could fit one in there, but that's, I don't think that's who you want.
The one right here, it's...
Or is less they end up spreading this.
Correct.
Okay.
So what does that do?
Well, they probably gets around, it's red and orange block coverage, I'm just gonna guess the bit, we're just over the block coverage, there is obviously that's probably going to be, Brian, most probably block coverage, Jerry, it goes away.
It's a, you asked for a variance-free application, so now you have a variance-free application.
Brian, that's to the north side that you're trimming, correct?
That is to the west.
To the, I was right for it.
By how many feet?
Seventy feet.
Well, we're gonna, we're giving it twenty, twenty feet.
Twenty feet.
From the property line to the left of the school.
Yeah, that's thirteen now, so it's making sense to do twenty feet.
So now, what happens if you wanna add on, if we, if we give, you'll let it add on to the...
Not if they need relief from the ward, they'd have to come back here.
That only implies if a block re-... The buffer is already free. This, if I add on that side?
Okay, so now, Mr. Homack, you connect with a motion.
It's a motion to approve, right-in, right-out only, the expect for buffer, the east side. Do you want, Terry, you want to see that?
The west side. The lot, the lot now, maybe we're something...
And it's right-in, right-out, some phone mentions is current.
It's most conservative.
Right, you want to update this there?
I think I get this.
For both entries.
About both entries?
I think the question, yes.
I think I have that.
They're gonna not make the votes, Bruce, and possibly the session. And this fits right with the block coverage, that is a problem.
So we have a motion by Mr. Homack, I'll second the motion.
And then who's yours, Mr. Homack? Thank you. And I'll take a vote call?
Vote call?
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Rooster.
I'm gonna be a moral coward, and I'm gonna abstain.
Mr. Chairman Nyman?
Yes.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, right? Mr. Homack?
Yes.
Mr. Wyche?
No.
That gives us...
Three, John?
Three, three yeses, one now, two extensions.
Three yeses, how many, there are six.
O S.
Now, extensions go with the...
There's probably three extensions.
Yeah, but that's correct. That just goes with the... I'll go check that, I'm pretty confident.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. That's it. No, I don't agree. No, I don't agree. I'm hoping to be able to...
Yeah.
It's not making... No, I don't agree. I'm hoping to be able to...
Yeah.
It's not making... No, I don't agree. I'm hoping to be able to...
Yeah.
It's not making... It's amazing. It's like, they got...
Oh, wait, please.
Can you send the detailed information to somebody from the... Question, yes. Question. I don't think it matters, because there is no... I don't think it matters. 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 I don't think it matters.
And all with me?
Can you send the detailed information to the public?
All right, guys, let's go. All right, let's go, continue.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Marion Weinstein on behalf of applicant roofing supply.
One second, timeout.
Hold on, just a minute, sorry, we don't have four minutes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, one, two, three, four. Someone's missing.
I could go twice. Okay.
Okay, we'll start over. Um, Marion Weinstein on behalf of the applicant, applicant roofing supply. This app- application is for minor site plan approval to expand the parking area and modify the site's circulation for the existing building to improve efficiency and safety. No new building construction or any change of use is proposed. The subject property has been operated as a roofing material supply company for the last twenty years. It contains offices and a warehouse, and there are typically twelve to fourteen employees on site at any given time. With that, I would like to call upon our engineer and planner, Robert Crowley of the firm Colliers Engineering, trying to bring some new blood to this board.
He's not new.
Well, he's not new, but he hasn't, because we were not bored enough, so...
Come forward, Mr. Crowley. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that testimony will be given before this board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Uh, please step forth here. Unless you want to call a funk, can you just tell the board the, uh, your credentials, your license, your...
Yes, so licensed professional engineer, professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Um, I've appeared before this board multiple times. I've been a planning board engineer for a town for seven years.
We'll accept that.
He's good.
Yes.
You have qualifications on engineering and planning?
That's correct.
Okay, please proceed, Ms. Weinstein.
Thank you so much. Um, Mr. Crowley, if you don't mind just starting by just describing the application for the board, what we're trying to do here and accomplish with this application, and then we can go on and address the damages.
Again, as you described, the purpose of, uh, proposed application is to provide a safer operation for the general public and to basically separate the loading operation that occurs for deliveries, uh, from the different vendors that come to the site. So, again, no building additions, any proposed, uh, modifications to the front portion of the property, if I may, and all of these exhibits that I had here conceding a report on site planning of it. As far as the, the coverage sheet, I just, again, we're going to worry the board, its location, we're a swap mall avenue. Uh, nineteen, nineteen oh five, swap mall, and, uh, our access point is on our eastern side of our property currently, and, um... Okay, we're at Fringe, one of eleven.
So what's in dark is the building?
No, what's in, what's in the dark shade on sheet three of eleven, which is the dimensioning plan, is the proposed...
Addition.
Area of cleavage that we're proposing.
So it's no building, just...
No building addition.
No building addition, all right.
So what is there now?
So currently, on, on page two of eleven, we're showing, we're showing a drive aisle for the entrance into the, into the site. And then there's a storage area that is located in here, and then it's also the area where they load in the building. There's also some existing parking stalls that are in a small, smaller, uh, parking area that's immediately adjacent to the building. Currently, across the front of the building, this whole area is crushed down, and, uh, there's some existing trees that are there.
So that's going to be removed?
That's correct.
And you're putting a part of, you're paving it?
That's correct.
You're paving it so that the trucks that come to deliver have easier access to the building, safer access to the building?
That's correct. And if I may, just so that, so that, again, I can worry, the, the intention is to have loading, uh, vehicles coming in the main entrance that exists today, uh, and then we will be modifying the parking area providing for an area for vehicles to be able to, uh, get stopped, go into your office, and then ultimately unload into the building, and then provide a separate entrance for...
The cars, for the employees.
For employees and for people visiting the site if they...
Are you creating any variances by this way?
We are, so we are requesting, uh, there's an existing parking variance nearby. Sixty-three parking stalls are required. We will survive even forty-three. We are getting three parking stalls.
But it's worked for this last twenty years.
That's correct. And we are, we're requesting a variance also for the location of the existing sign. So part of our existing sign is located just to the left of the existing entrance. With the proposed construction, we want to just shift the sign, keep it in the same location, we require, uh, variance. And also, the existing sign height is six point nine feet, or six meters.
Does something happen, like what is, what prompted this, was there a crash?
Just, here's, here's, I guess, regular conflicts with delivery trucks that are coming into the site. And if there's multiple delivery trucks that, that happen to occur, and here's, uh, a, uh... Customer that comes to the site and wants to see if the building material would be damaged or something. With the parking ratio, the way this happens, always, there would be a...
And those can have your own delivery trucks parked inside.
Uh, here's, not only we have our own delivery trucks, but there's also vendors that bring materials to the site.
Any questions by any members? What? Yes.
So, so I understand, I'm sorry, you brought it up, it's just some, I see, one, two, three, four, five, six, now. When you name this, who are you, are you...
So currently, currently, there are now, we're going to put street trees along the right of way.
You got some bushes in this, though.
There's, there's some trees that are set back, but it's, uh, come the right of way. We will be placing these.
We will. Um, that's the, uh, that's the...
Okay.
So, in addition to the variances that I noted, they're, they're also requesting waivers, uh, another waiver is requested for sidewalks. There's your sidewalk at two thousand feet of the site, and there's really a sidewalk in the industrial part.
I think slowly we have been, was made, had applications come in for sidewalks to be, uh, tested.
Yeah, it has been a general way to look at it, because a lot of this, not being industrial, there are a lot of people... Um, would the board possibly consider that if that puts a bond, puts a bond state for five years, if we do, if we do need to recycle, then it's not for the side.
Okay, it's been, I think it's Weinstein, sure, I think it's something we've been consistently doing, and if we do it consistently over twenty, thirty years, there's a lot of schools in the area, we should, uh... That was incorrect.
Not much.
Somewhat, sorry, let me take a second.
There are no last few, we've got a question from the mayor.
I, I think his point is just that in this particular location, there are no sidewalks at all on the, on that street, on that block. The, the suggestion of the bond is just that if and when neighbors on the block would put in sidewalks, we'd certainly put it in. But at this point, it seems kind of useless to just have a sidewalk on this piece in the vacuum. And I agree with you, yes, I'm in front of this board a lot more often than, uh, than Mr. Curly, so yes, I'm aware this is what the board typically requires. It's a request based upon the fact that, as he said, there really are no sidewalks within two thousand feet of the property. So at this point, it would kind of be just a sidewalk on this property in the vacuum. So the bond would perhaps solve the issue that if and when neighbors came into the planning board and at that point had to put in their sidewalks, we would put in ours, and it would make sense.
But when that next application came, it's Weinstein, he'll say, look, there's no sidewalks anywhere around.
No, there's not.
There's a good moment. I'm sure he'll disclose that to us over here.
I think, I think we've been doing this.
Yeah. And the mayor's asked us.
Your version of sidewalks is the cost?
Yeah. It's, the, the applicant is actually a tenant at this property, so the cost is definitely, the cost is definitely an issue to them. If, if the cost ends up being, they, they talk to themselves that if the cost becomes too exorbitant, they'll drop the whole project because they are really a tenant, but i- if the board requires it, the board requires it, they will put them in.
Are the other design waivers okay? I just didn't want that to be overlooked.
Sorry.
The other design waivers that are listed?
So, um, I may, to the real chance of the other waivers that we are requesting, uh, that's required, and there's various, we take the best. And then, um, there's also a requirement for models, also a requirement for the property, uh, to the modification of, of the property.
Question, Chairman, if I could, um, outside of the parishes and the waders side, uh, do you have a brief comment on that? So, under Washington, second.
So, there is no comment in the test for stormwater management. Um, it's our, it's our opinion that this is a minor development, and as it is a minor development, that wouldn't require any storm management provisions at all. However, we are providing a, uh, applied retention area just in front of the property. We provide appropriations that are associated with that, and we mean that we're managing a stormwater that's being generated by, uh, those apartments.
Chairman, that's not something that we can, I, I recommend that if the board is comfortable with the obligations, that we'll reply after the board, if you're in behind where you're...
There's also a design waiver from imposing the trash receptacle?
Excuse me, I apologize.
That's okay.
Um, that's why we have Ali. Right now, in this room, there's an area that we have a, well, please step back. We have a, uh, a trash compactor that's utilized for garbage work on site. Because, um, the garbage dumpster is located in the west, rear, toward the east, northeast corner of the property. Um, there is still a...
Okay, anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application? Seeing not on closing, the public?
I'll make a motion to give a motion to this application.
Um, with, with what has been laid out of sidewalks?
I don't think any sidewalks are necessary, but there's nobody walking.
So you're making a motion to have the sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay, what with all the other, with all the other, um...
Yes. Were there any other conditions? I'll make your part.
No, um, just that he's going to plant the trees together, but that's on the plan, that's not a, that's not a condition, so... Do we have a second to that motion? I'll second that motion. And, uh, yeah, roll the call, roll the call.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Rooster?
Yes.
Mr. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
No.
Mr. Hallmark?
Yes.
Mr. Yerster?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, item number three.
That's the twenty-four forty-nine, David Worschauer Electric Supply Company, with the major site plan in addition to a warehouse with seven hundred gas.
Okay, that's, law is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good evening, my name is Jan Boers, I'm a partner in the law firm of Dad Bay, Michael Wolf in Lakewood. Ever since the applicant, Worschauer Electric Supply Company came. Uh, the facility that's sub to this application is located in Lakewood Industrial Park and is located in this seven hundred gas truck. The applicant is seeking preliminary final major site plan approval for the construction of a one-story, twenty thousand square foot addition to an existing forty thousand square foot warehouse and associated walkway park. In connection with the application, the, uh, applicant is also seeking variances for minimal lot width. Uh, the current requirement is three hundred foot, this is an existing lot, existing condition was two hundred and seventy eight point six foot, uh, and that was the size of the property when it was acquired. Also seeking variances for recite identification signs and setbacks, uh, orders required, one, allows one sign with fifty foot setback. Again, this is the existing condition that, uh, there was properly required, uh, there are three signs, there's no setback. So we're asking for, uh, variances for that. Uh, the applicant is also seeking a five-foot buckle, or a flat five-foot, which is required, um... Uh, and the applicant is also seeking a five-foot buckle, or a twenty-five-foot, which is required, um, to what? Hmm? To what? Five-foot. Oh, Mr. Carr will explain the buffer. Uh, requirement, uh, for releasing the requirement for sidewalks on Bassett Avenue and the wide street trees. Just my way of background, um, Worshow Electric Supply Company has over sixty-five years of experience in, uh, the electric, as electric warehouse, uh, warehouse and wholesaler. Um, the applicant first located in Lakewood in nineteen ninety-eight. In two thousand and eleven, they moved their facility to the current facility, which is, uh, which they acquired, they own. Uh, when they first acquired it, they were one of four occupants of the building, they're now occupied the entire building, they're, they're, oh, their business has grown tremendously in Lakewood, and they want to continue it to grow. They are a B to B electric, uh, wholesaler, um, and, and now want to utilize the entire building plus the, the addition. So, with that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Jeffrey Carr, uh, William D. Carter, who is going to describe the project, uh, shortly. Mr. Carr? Do you swear a firm, that's what I gave before this court, with nothing about the district here?
I do. Jeffrey J. Carr, uh, with the firm of Mr. D. Carter, Brick, licensed professional engineer, licensed professional planner. A little separate. Thank you, thank you. Uh, I have on the, uh, people here, a copy of the, uh, plans, or at least two of the plans from the set that we gave to you, and cloud the, uh, planning board. Uh, the first one I refer to is sheet number two, and which is the existing condition, basically to, uh, to describe the site. North is up, uh, Cedar Bridge Avenue is in the, uh, upper right-hand corner, and Bassett Avenue is on the left, or inpatient. Um, the, the site is, as, as this board has indicated, developed with an existing building, approximately forty thousand square feet. There's some parking and two entrances along Bassett Avenue, somewhat of a high shape in that the sidewalk lines diverge as on the curve of Bassett Avenue. Uh, the side of the property and portions of the rear property are developed with loading nods, parking areas, paved areas. Um, the back of the site is undeveloped, um, and basically the rear to the point here in the northeast section of the site. Um, that's how the site.
And that's where you want to make this in the back?
Correct, correct. So, that's how the site laid out now. Uh, uh, we're surrounded basically by industrial uses, the one to our rear, you may ask about the buffer, I'll talk about that, but to the rear is, is actually their sideline, made from, on Cedar Bridge Avenue. To the north of us is, uh, is a pond, which is basically a, uh, and a stormwater management basin that serves the industrial park, and then, uh, the rest of the, uh, industrial park is to our south and to our west. The way we're proposing to, uh, develop the site is, is, uh, pretty straightforward, pretty easy. Uh, we're simply adding, in addition, that the back of the building is roughly a twenty thousand square foot addition, and it will expand, and then the loading nod, parking area, uh, and, and storage area in that part on the south side of the building, uh, will continue to be developed as, as well with additional, uh, loading nods. Uh, the site now does not have stormwater management, basically a pipe system goes directly to the, uh, stormwater manager on, uh, enjoying the site. We are adding stormwater, there's new stormwater regulations requires to improve it that were required back in, in the day when this was first built, so we will have a stormwater basin in the back, that will be recently approached, uh, on that area as well. The front of the site basically stays as is, there's no real change up there, and north of the site, that will be the same as, as well. So, pretty straightforward, pretty simple, what we're doing there. The way the site operates, um, as Mr. Ware's indicated, uh, originally, when, uh, Worshow had bought the project, or bought the building, uh, he was class acting, and at first, then bought the building, there were other tenants in the building, as they left, he expanded into their spaces, so he occupies the building, combing that without tenants, and he's continued to expand, um, and, and that's in reason for the addition, and no expanding to that area. As far as the employees' operation, there's twenty-one employees now, we anticipate that at full build-out, there'll be four additional employees, it's basically warehouse space that's needed.
So, it's, it's not a separate building, it's being attached?
It's attached. It'll be one single building, when it's all said and done, architecturally, it will look like one building. Um, the side will be the same, the roof structure, the sun will all be carried through, either back to.
Height the same?
I'm sorry?
Height.
Uh, the height will be the same as the existing, to match, match the height here.
Not to contradict myself, but on this application, let's look at sidewalks for a second, because here there are schools, there are people who walk in this area, would you be against putting sidewalks in here?
Well, we, we've asked for a waiver of the sidewalks, and we've looked at the area, and, uh, there, there are no sidewalks on, on Bassett Avenue, and of course, the street is, is a school, but their, their entire property, they don't have sidewalks on their property, and they're fenced in with what are in fence to prevent pedestrians from, from going out the road, so, and of course, with the stormwater basin in the north of that, there's no sidewalks up there.
It's almost makes, said the UPS family have sidewalks, I'm sorry, the UPS building? No. It's your neighboring building?
No. No, there's no sidewalks all along Bassett, as far as I know.
Okay.
And not across the street.
There's no, there'll be pedestrian traffic in that area, either the schools or roads, so.
I sometimes, you know, people, whatever, okay, I hear what you're saying.
But at least, we, we only get that little strip, and like I said, the school across the street actually discourages it by putting that what are in fence there, so people don't act as, in that area. So, I think, I think it'd be contradictory, what that's why I tried to do it, at least in that area.
Um, I know you're taking out a lot of trees there, are you going to have street trees in the, uh?
We, we, we're asking for the technical waiver of street trees, but in my opinion, that's really technical waiver. There's, you can see the loop road that comes in, the driveway that comes in and, and goes out. On either side of that, in that center aisle, roughly, there's thirty-plus trees in that area, uh, already, so it really isn't, okay, you're laying out the rule, it really isn't a, a, a good way to add street trees to, to line the property there. So, we're asking for a waiver, and I believe that's on the technical sense, and I think in the spirit of it, we, we need that.
Are you gonna, are you, are you taking out all the trees in the back, or are you only?
No, well, there's going to be some, uh, there's a tree saving area, um, uh, the northeast section, Cedar Bridge Avenue, so where it faces Cedar Bridge Avenue, so it'll give some buffer to, there's a rear view, but, um, essentially, we're going to take, uh, most of it.
So, where's the tree saving area?
Just the tree saving area, correct.
Is there both, being, being aligned, trees in the back, what would basically, I would call the, uh, frontage to, on the Cedar Bridge side?
Um, exactly, that's, that's the area we have, there's probably about, uh, um, I'd say.
But all the way across to where the, the?
I'd say it's about fifty feet of trees from the corner of the building all the way across, which, which, uh, buffer Cedar Bridge Avenue.
What about directly behind the new addition?
Directly behind it?
No, to the north.
Oh, to the north? Uh, there's nothing there now, that's basically a worn area, that's the side of the building along the, um.
Does that mean you want trees there?
Well, we'll be saving, we'll be saving those trees, uh, in the back.
No, no, it's not, right, right.
Right in here. Uh, some of those trees we would be saving, obviously, obviously, unfortunately. If you look at it, it's probably about half of that building, closest to the existing building, it's already, it's already vacant, so we're taking basically down the back end of the building, the trees.
Why, why, why do you need to take the trees down?
Well, unfortunately, as I indicated, um, under the old regulations, the stormwater pond handled stormwater for here, and we have piping systems that went here, and that, that's, that's actually a stormwater pond that was built as part of the industrial park, so it was designed to handle this site. The new NJDB regulations requires us to do additional stormwater, water quality aspects, so we were required to add, uh, additional stormwater, and, and the, the kind of the triangle space behind the addition, that's going to be a, a contention thing, so.
The additional contention base?
Correct. So, our system will flow into here, into our new basin, and then, and then flow into the storm.
It responds, Mr. Stern is asking, right now, this tree's up here?
Yes, and we'll have.
Are you thinking, uh?
These, these trees here will be saved, and.
It looks like a duck.
Yes, right. These will be saved here, and this rear portion here will be saved.
Great.
And the, the variance, we're asking for one variance, and again, that's a technical variance, uh, as I indicated, the, the property line diverged away from Bassett Avenue, it opens up later in the rear, we have a lot of frontage variance, three hundred feet required, we're just shy of three hundred feet, as of existing condition.
The side.
Oh, in the sides.
The side.
There, there are three signs on the site at the driveways, two on the Broadway driveway, one close to the subway driveway, they're relatively small, the signs, you can see the details on sheet number, uh, three of ten, they're existing, they've been existing, um, Worshow had, was the building twenty-eleven, two thousand and eleven, they pre-existed, uh, his ownership of the building, where just that, that goes between paint. No, no change, no changes, we're not going to do something, there's no need to, that's it.
Okay. Anyone from the public which should be heard on this application? Sign on closing to the public, I'll launch a chain motion.
The only condition I know of is that there's trees on the north side of the addition, or something, since they're not labeled on the plans.
We'll, we'll lay out, that's fine.
All right. Other questions?
Other questions? With the sidewalk?
With the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Waiver?
Waiver, waiver. You have a second? I, I think the reason why you don't have a second is because, uh, more than just want to see a sidewalk, it'd be a big issue to, to put the sidewalk. You know?
If, if the board requires sidewalk, if that's the condition, then we, we, again, we don't, we don't see it is, but that's not, we're not going to fight that over the, over the approval.
Are you willing to amend your, your, uh, uh, so? We amended the application, the, uh, motion to include the sidewalk.
You know, one thing maybe, I don't know, when I'm working with, maybe, uh, a path, instead of a sidewalk, but there's a path.
There are, yeah, there is a path, yeah, asphalt.
I, you know, unfortunately, once, once you get into that, there's safety issues, and so you're, you're either going to have a sidewalk or not.
You know, there, there are a bunch of schools in that area there, and I, I, you know?
We, we, we understand, and.
So, we have a motion, do we have a second to that motion? Second, roll call.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Brewster?
Yes.
Jeremy?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Hallmark?
Yes.
Mr. Marster?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next on the agenda is, um?
It is a subdivision and a site plan that kind of go together, the board may want to hear them currently, so they will require a separate motion, um, it's a minor subdivision, it'll reline the lot line, and then the site plan is for a shul on one of those.
So, let's hear, let's hear it together.
Let, let Mr. Renner sit down.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, as, as the applicant, as Elliot, as Elliot, they, they do two applications here, one is a fully performing minor subdivision, we have two lots, we're going to end up with two lots, there are no variances on the subdivision, uh, we're probably going to work for at the end, it was just a, that's a fully performing application, uh, no variances. Uh, separately, we do have a site plan application, uh, for a congregation, um, for a shul to be built, uh, on the lot. Um, as the board should also be aware, this is an existing congregation, they're there, they're on the trailer, uh, they've been there for many years, um, so you'll hear, we do have a few variances, um, one of them being parking, uh, but the board should understand, this is really the, uh, community shul, we're not doing this to expand, to grow, to bring more people in, this is for existing, uh, members.
How are you dealing with the parking?
I'm sorry.
How are you dealing with the parking?
Majority, it's onsite, and the majority of people are walking, uh, because it's really for it for the, the neighboring, uh, property owners. Uh, we are seeing, Brian, with all the, the specifics were very important, uh, we do have a design waivers, we're asking, uh, for a waiver for improving Arlington Avenue, um, this is a, a request, um, from both, uh, first application, the subdivision along with the, the shul, they're not looking to improve in front of the, uh, in front of the property, um, the side street on, on Arlington, we're not looking to approve, um, that's for safety concerns from neighbors in the area.
There is like a mound of dirt.
There's a mound of dirt there, we're not going to change anything, it's actually.
Up until the mound, you've, that's.
It's already, it's actually already, I believe, some kind of pavement already done, um, I did ask one of the neighbors, we see, yes, they believe certain areas are paved, so looking for a status quo in that part, um, but I'll let Brian get into all of the, uh, specifics, uh, we can't, it's a planory, and then, um, one, we'll, we'll just.
Did you try to, from testimony, give the word of introduction and that part?
I do, Brian Donner Jackson, a Jersey licensed professional engineer, planner, uh, I have a bunch of exhibits, A one is, uh, the minor subdivision, existing conditions and improvement plan, it shows, uh, pretty simply what we're requesting with respect to the minor subdivision, and the two existing lots with three houses on it, we're proposing to change that to be two lots, the residential lot in the back, and the shul lot in the front. Uh, A, uh, two is sheet one point oh seven, the tax map, it shows where the two existing lots are on Arlington Avenue at the corner of Pine Street. Uh, A three is an aerial, uh, which shows, uh, the houses around us and, and the subject site. A four is a copy of sheet three of nineteen of the plan submitted, it shows the shul that's, uh, proposed with the, uh, parking in front of it. Uh, A four is the, our, uh, A five, architectural plans, this is the application, and A six is just the minor subdivision map, uh, that will be filed, that shows the two lots of residential.
Okay.
With respect to the, uh, minor subdivision, um, uh, as indicated in Terry's report, uh, it's permitted uses, and no variances are being requested, the design waiver that Adam, uh, touched on is the improvement of Arlington, and, uh, I, I would expect the board is familiar with that area, they don't want Arlington to be becoming a throughway, so Arlington doesn't.
Why would that even be part of this application?
Because. Because there's a right of way in front of us, the ordinance says you have to approve the right of way, so we need a design waiver for improving that, we want to maintain the status quo. Um, and we also need a, a, a design waiver with respect to, uh, street trees, and, and it's a technical one, R V D recommends we put two more in, and, and we'll put the two more in, uh, to make it fit. Uh, the, uh, review comments with respect to that, one of them, number seven, was indicating to remove the existing shed, we, we don't want to remove the existing shed at this time, it's, it's, it's there, it doesn't violate any setbacks. As indicated on A one, the existing residential structural say there, there'll be a driveway put in with four parking spaces, which is more than sufficient for the existing residents, and, and that has access, uh, from Arlington Avenue to the north. Uh, the shul will be on the lot along Pine Street, that has access, uh, from, uh, Pine Street, and it joins Arlington Avenue, uh, next to the, the basin, I go next to the mound that separates the road, so it's not a through street, the, the landscaping plan for the shul. The landscaping plan for the shul actually show trees across the Arlington Avenue right of way that'll tend to solidify the no through street and also improve the appearance of just having a mound there. Other than that, all the comments in the report with respect to the minor subdivision, we would comply with. The site plan, we need variance relief to make the shul fit, as Adam indicated, it's an existing congregation and an existing shul, phrase in the trailer there today. What we want is a, a real shul, a permanent shul, the congregation's been looking for this for quite some time now. So the variance relief that we're requesting, from Terry's report, item one on zoning on page three indicates it's permitted use, minimum front setback, we're asking for twelve point three feet from Arlington Avenue where thirty feet is required. If you look on A four, the relief is from Arlington Avenue, which doesn't go through the shul, it's not really a street that's going to have any negative impact. Minimum rear yard setback, which would be to the lot that we're creating. We're asking for a ten feet where twenty feet is required, minimum side yard setback, we're asking for six point three seventeen where ten feet is required. Maximum building coverage, we're asking for thirty-five point seven five or twenty-five percent is required. The number of Wall Street parking spaces is the big variance that we're asking for. For the ordinance, we would need thirty-two Wall Street spaces, we're proposing seven. Again, yes, again, it's a congregation that phrase, they're now they walk, it's a local congregation, we can have testimony from the congregants afterwards. But it's, they're, they're going there to pray now, we all have the thirty-two car parking lot there now, so they're local and they understand the situation. Well, it's the same number of congregants that, that are going to be praying.
Are we using the same word right now?
Trailers?
Yeah.
I'll catch you there.
So we need relief from the buffer, twenty foot buffer is required and we're proposing fencing and landscaping. The same with the buffer for the parking, we're also proposing fencing and landscaping. With respect to justification, with the ordinance, the vision statement of the two thousand seventeen master plan, page seven, says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles and provide sufficient educational, recreational and community facilities coming. The needs, municipal land use will end ASA forty call fifty-five D two under the purpose of the act. Recursion to this election to guide the work for use and development of whole lands of the state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals and gender equality. There's C two variances, we need to show relates to a specific piece of property. This is a very unique property that we're re-subdividing to make the shul work. The purpose of the municipal land use will end again, the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. There is a congregation praying there now, the variance will not carry the intent purpose of the zone plan in zoning warnings, because the impact is permitted. And the benefits, which in my opinion are minimal, because there is a shul there now and what we're doing is making it a better situation, substantially outweigh any detriment.
Mr. Chairman, so I asked, the size of the trailer is approximately eighteen hundred square feet existing, that also includes the bathrooms, so let's just say it's about sixteen hundred square feet, but also one of the members reminded me, they're not getting more people, they just want to bring their kids to shul as well. So while, yes, the sanctuary itself, this application is growing, it's not just like a lot of new development going on in the area, same congregation coming, just now they're talking about...
There is one question in the review letter. It references that thirty-two spaces are required according to the parking calculations shown on your plans. If you were to have catering in the kiddish hall, I believe you require additional parking, is that correct?
Is there, is there a rentable kiddish hall here?
It's very large in the basement.
There's no rentable hall to extend or...
So I'm going to put that as one of the conditions, this is what I'm operating out. No bar, no bris, no...
It's not exactly, it's there. Our maintenance, we're not looking for a rentable hall. We don't have a parking space to bring everybody, you can agree with that. One. I'm being, I'm being vocal about the government, because the whole rent, rent that's due or there.
So I'm just a simple guy, I'm reading your plans. Your plans say kiddish shul. This twenty-five hundred sixty-five square feet, that is not small.
It's as big as the basement, I should have that.
A hundred square feet, I think I counted it once, it's about the size of this room.
Again, that's one of the years that the congressmen open, they're not looking for a rentable hall, it's not there, we don't have a parking board.
Randy, explain to me, so Rabbi, or Mr. Google says that there's parking on this location. Why are we not, I'm not saying that we should, why are we not...
Connecting Arlington through to the north.
Yeah, through to James.
Through the main street.
Through the main street, excuse me. For starters, the applicant who, or the owner of the property, will not allow that as a condition. Additionally, his neighbors, which is why he doesn't want it, his neighbors to the north on Arlington, don't want everybody cutting through Arlington. Arlington was open, people would cut through.
People wish that. So does that make sense?
So why don't we, I, I, I want it, because I would cut through, but it will not happen. The application will die because the property owner...
Who owns the township, is that a...
It's a township on street.
Why don't we go stuck to that, we can do a vacate, why don't we vacate it?
We can't vacate, don't vacate. When I'm not vacating.
No, I hope we can, but, yeah, the township, their philosophy is not to vacate streets, because you never know if something changes. If all of a sudden the people on the other end of Arlington Street say, oh, it'd be great to have people come through, then the township can approve it. The whole thing isn't the township's responsibility now, whatever they'd like to do.
The condition I know that the thing has been hoped to happen by now, Pine Street is also, you know, just have things sort of later, that's something, in worst you hope, it's going to happen already, but it will ease some of the other traffic issues.
So we're, I understand. We're, we would be approving that there will be no development on, or they're just, we're giving a waiver that they don't have?
We don't, we don't have to approve. Not for Samson.
Okay, if it's informally being parked, and we could do a proper, formal vacate the street payment and get seventy-five hundred billables.
That should not help you. If you vacate the street, half of it, it's a fifty foot right, assuming it is the moment, twenty-five feet goes to the left, twenty-five feet goes to the right.
Well, he wants a big fence, you're not parking it.
There's no, there's no parking at all, it's not going to be added onto the deeper property. So you actually lose it here, it's informal, you still have that access as an overall parking.
You were here for the last one, I guess I'm struggling with, we have, we had a, a scenario earlier tonight, which had fifteen hundred square feet and we, I spent two nights, about ten hours pushing on parking, we had three times as much parking. This is technically a corner as well, I know it's not, okay, but it's technically a corner as well, fourteen hundred square feet, and they also claim they were walking and yet we go...
Fair, very fair question. The difference is, I think when we open the public here, the neighbors, there you have conflicting arguments from this area. People say, people coming to pray here, don't even live here, they're walking or coming from a different area and they're going to come here, and there's a lot of issue with traffic and kids and schools. Here you have an existing congregation that's already there, it's the same people who are trying to pray, all they want to do is bring the children, having the children come is not going to create any more parking. Right, they're coming, walking, shabbos are walking locally, they're going to be coming there.
So we, they show also to shabbos.
The representation, I think, when we open the public, there's only shabbos, but I can't tell you that when they open up, they're not going to have...
Just shabbos, our day is only shabbos. The building will only go to shabbos. I would love to have somebody on this shul, representative of the shul.
You can't represent the shul, it's not an attorney.
No, 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 no. The community will, on behalf of the congregation, will testify under oath, under penalty of perjury, penalty of perjury, that there will be, you know, I'm serious, I'm getting nothing.
I just wonder...
But this is, if this, if you guys have, if you guys have symptoms and bruises on Monday mornings, you're doing a huge disservice to the people, so I want somebody to please...
It's a witness warning.
Sorry, just, it's just...
Yeah, fair question.
John, you got to have a witness warning.
Do you swear from testimony, give me further word of the truth, the whole truth, and nothing more?
Yes.
Can you do a screening?
Mark Lowenjer, thirty-three, three seventy.
Mr. Lowenjer, you were, you were cogitated at this, at the shul.
Yes.
Okay, I didn't, you were speaking with the county of the shul, the representative?
I'm speaking offensively, yes.
So you got some questions?
Look, I just want, as a representative...
As a representative, I can tell you it's clearly...
Under penalty of perjury, tell us under oath, under that agreement...
Yes.
There will, there's no current intention if they use this as a symbol of...
That is correct. It is only intended to be a shabbos kiddish shul. Because the shabbos are obviously included, it's specifically for shabbos use, correct? And I just want to point out, I'm standing already, the parking in that area is current, right? And even if there were to be other beach streets there, which there never will be, you can always park on the signs, the both signs will be, all the neighbors here, they can affirm they're comfortable with the situation now, there's a lot of pine tree parking in and out around.
So, are you, so the, the person, just a shabbos shul or not?
Correct. There's a night cuddle, or... There's a night cuddle, they do have a model when they're in sessions.
There's nothing in the morning.
Nothing in the morning currently, correct.
And we're going to be private, right?
It's actually good, it's something in the morning, a pine tree, you can sit in the street, there's nothing in the morning.
That's a question for the board, if you're talking about the penalty of perjury, and they could, oh, or they go simple.
I'm still standing.
And there is a question.
This is why I left this test.
There is a question.
Okay.
That's our presentation, I want to open the public's, confirm anything else that you're interested in. I'm just a word of the discussion.
Any other questions, board members?
My comment is the same, but I sound like a broken record. I want, it's a residential area, I see no reason why we should violate the buffers that I did. There's a reason that group doesn't, that the council board requires buffers, because it's a study to study, synagogues or schools that are approved in residential areas. Down this road, for, 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 for this residential area, people are around, and you want to use a design waiver for the buffers, I see no reason why this portion can alter. The shul or the school, the rest of the shul, respects the neighbors. Some neighbors are uncomfortable objecting to the shul, obviously. There's a reason why that council board speaks to buffers, I think that we already started to send signal to the professionals that the board is looking to be respected, justice for an application, so we can tonight. There's no reason to violate it.
What buffer are they asking for, what waiver is that they're asking for?
Well, we're, we're asking for waivers and buffers, that we're going to do planking fences instead. But my, my opinion on this would be, the buffers are in the ordinance, and the county committee put them in the ordinance, so that when an applicant comes to the board, the board has the right to explain and ask, and then you hear from the public, it's similar to the ordinance that was just proposed, that they're trying to make it easier, that he can just come, there's some discrepancy on, is it better to have it come? And I think the buffers are in there for that reason, and I think the last one, it was in a neighborhood where the congregants weren't from that neighborhood and had a different situation. Here, the room is full right now, I'm expecting the whole, the groupful of people is in favor of this. And that would make the difference, if the neighborhood is comfortable with the, the buffers, it's different than in the other area where the neighborhood was not.
Why can't you provide street trees along the project?
We won't, we won't, we won't provide street trees today.
That's the only waiver you're asking for, right?
Well, we're, we're asking for buffer relief also, and my testimony, I agreed with Terry.
It has listed under variance, is the buffer, parking is required. If you look at the site plan review letter, not the subdivision, the variance relief is listed under, I'm sorry, the buffer needs listed under variance.
Yeah, there's two reports, one for the minor subdivision, which is variance free, one for the site plan, which had variances. With respect to the street trees, the RDU report suggests adding two, and my testimony was that we would do that. We will add streets to the extent they fit.
I agree with you, because the difference is that some neighbors are uncomfortable objecting and I think they try and look this board to try to satisfy their...
Well, I, I...
There's no question that when there's a whole group of people objecting to this, obviously it's a story.
And, and, I, I've done a lot of applications in Lakewood for shuls, most of them request buffers. I also know that the neighbors, because Lakewood is a town with very few secrets, that there's neighbors that feel uncomfortable objecting, that they, they have other ways of making that known. And I think if you open it to the public, you get more of a feeling as to whether they approve in favor of the application as presented or not.
It's what I've been asking. Theoretically, if we were putting parking on that street, which is what we're not, which we're allowed to say is parking, but with cars actually parked on Arlington, not finished, whatever we call it, how many spots are we actually going to have? How many spots, people in that square footage, that Arlington area is part of?
But if, if, if they do stack parking, you're, you're going to get probably four yards wide and, and the, uh, the frontage before you hit the...
I also just point out, lot eleven point oh two, right, where the shul is going to end up coming up, it's a quarter lot, the next two, the one property to the subdivision is our applicant, who understands that, and the property to the north, the neighbors are here and they're also, they're in favor of this as well. So our, our point is that, I understand everything, and you're right, if this is the middle of the park, you're touching fifty different properties and all you have, the concern was, I know all started, appreciated a few months back, there's a school, there's coffee getting in and out, there's pounding and alarming door lock from cars, these happen, these neighbors are the ones who want this here. So it is different, I agree, believe, you've heard, we've had many applications in the last few ones, and we, Ryan and myself are telling all the applicants, guys, look at the buffers, you gotta connect. This is a unique situation, everybody's serious, everybody's eyes wide open, they're living here already and they're saying, we're open, again.
But Pine Street is a pretty significant street right now, there are people that live in here, maybe feel fine with it, but like you see the spruce, if you plant, you feel fine, because you go parking all over.
I was addressing some of the buffers, to the rear, the property.
I agree with you, you're absolutely right, people, the neighbors don't object, it goes along with it. But there's, there's another element of respect into buffers that gives them a look to the shuls and the schools that are being created, where it doesn't look like parking, my French, doesn't look like a bar block, whereas it's a little, it looks like you're still in suburban area where you have nice tree, tree lines, those items. But I think you're, well, you're absolutely right, the neighbors next door don't object at all, it goes along with it. But there is another element.
So should we open it to the public, let's hear it? So we'll open this to the public, anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application? You want one? Um, well, actually, you could go again, because you really have... It's just a question. All right. You don't have to come, there's no minutes for the come, if you want to come, you can. You don't have to come, there's no minutes for the come, if you wanna come, you know.
Sir, please state your name.
My name is Marty Girls, I live two-two on Pine Street, which is next door to, uh, right next door to this property.
Please raise your right hand to affirm testimony before the court, the whole trip, the whole trip.
Yes, I do. I just want to point out that I am a member of the zoning board, and I spoke with, um, the township attorney, and he, he told me that I can.
You're very right, you can proceed.
So I live right next door, two-two on Pine Street, which is right next door to.
He lives on the map, so he's, he lives where the parking is.
This is my property here, it's going all the way to, probably, probably, that, that is, all the way to pretty much, yeah, to, to, to where.
Excellent, I can see it, I can see it.
It's up here, it's in the, it's two-two one right here.
Oh, okay.
And this is where the new parking.
Right, so you see, you do see two-two one.
Yes. Okay, proceed.
So, um, first of all, I just want to tell you that I am in favor of this application, I, I am okay with if we look, and you'll see the, the, the tree line that they're planning on planting over there, I'm okay with all that, and that is sufficient for, for me and my family to, um, uh, you know, for, for climate. The concern about buffers being in the way, I don't feel it's going to be a concern, at least as far as I am concerned. Uh, secondly, I also want to point out that I live in the neighborhood, yes, concrete at certain times gets jammed up, mainly later on during the day, uh, there is a great need for shools on jobs, especially there's no seating in any shows, we are full on jobs, we can't make our, you know, we can't bring our kids to, to show what we do, we have to stack them, which is not very good, not very conducive for, um, for anything, and all the shools in the neighborhood have problems with it. The, the property values, those there, skyrocketed, it's a very desirable neighborhood, there's really no way for us to, to, um, to do this any other way. It would be great if, if we had, you know, we could build even bigger with, and you can just away from, say, you didn't have any parking, this is maybe a shop, obviously, that's not what the show's asking for, um, but we think that this is going to be sufficient, even if we end up having a million during the week, it's going to just be one million because right, well, four houses away, it's on the show, which has a, you know, has sufficient to Zanun, and as far as parking down the block, sufficient to Zanun there as well, there's absolutely no reason why I think it's going to negatively impact, uh, inevitably affect the neighborhood in terms of parking, in terms of people coming as well. I understand the concerns about during the week, if somebody would be in a busy area, that would be definitely an issue, with lots of cars coming, but that's not what we're asking for, we're asking for the, you know, the right to do something in base of some jobs, which should not affect it, that's, um.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else in the public wish to be heard? Do you want to add something to what you said?
No, just read through.
I got it.
Maybe, everybody here, does, supported the show, supported the event, and he's one of the other members of the show.
Okay, fine.
And again, I'm glad I got it this out. Should be attempted at just the same time.
I guess.
Okay.
Any board members have any other questions? You have from two to one. This is okay. Um, any other questions, anyone?
Shall we take two separate?
Yes, yeah, we need one on subdivision. Yes, 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 let's do the subdivisions first then, right? Do the subdivision first. Okay, so I'll let you attend a motion on the subdivision, we're not creating any parents.
It's fully reforming, uh, the argument required notice, I did send notice without, um, yeah, it's fully reforming, subdivision.
We have a motion, my Mr. Hallman approved. I'll second that motion, local.
Mr. Meyer.
Your.
Mr. Brewster.
Yes.
Kevin Diamond.
Yes.
Mr. Hallman.
Yes.
Mr. Yerser.
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, let's take a motion on the actual show.
Are you concluding the condition that the kiddish will not be rented out, or will we?
Definitely.
Okay.
First of the subdivision.
No, no, no. I mean, for the motion that was just made for the site plan.
So before we do it, John, is there anything, we've talked about this before, is there anything we can do to give that more teeth?
Involving a report, that she meant to indicate, now, this is an deed restriction, but it can say that the planning board resolution, you know, the planning board resolution provides that the kiddish will not be rented out.
During the week.
I'm sorry?
During the week.
During the week, yeah. We could record.
Suppose it's not a, how, suppose I dump it during the week, I'll see.
All right, so I'll attend motion on that with that stipulation.
And it, I'm just, and the design waiver from improving our.
Yeah, well, yes, and the regular waivers that were requested. I'll make a motion to approve the show with the, um, with the kiddish hold, nothing I did out there, and branding them with the waivers, the waivers that they asked for these shows, for the show.
I'll second. Lowes office?
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Brewster.
Yes.
Kevin Diamond.
Yes.
Mr. Hallman.
No.
Mr. Yerser.
No.
That's three, that's two notes.
Thank you very much.
Next application.
Right up in SC twenty-three fifty-one, this is a previous approval by the planning board, they're returning for reconsideration of the design waiver. Um, the planning package is.
Wish, thank you, great job.
And we'll get, Mr. Reddick returns today.
Sir, please, uh, raise your right hand. Do you swear from testimony before the court? And please state your name and your credentials, please.
Andrew French, French Corolla Associates, I'm a professional licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey, I provided expert testimony for the application in October of twenty-twenty-one, but in front of this board, I've received a citation.
Okay, so, um, so this is, I'm just saying, now, I spent, uh, I had several conversations with, um, Mr. French, uh, apparently there was a design.
I just can't hear, you can just really take that conversation outside, I'm sorry.
Apparently there was a design waiver, it was not branded for street trees and utilities, and indeed, uh, industrial work. Um, Mr. French, well, he sees a routine granted by the board, and, 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 and lieu of putting a deed restriction, they, uh, wanna ask the board if it would be possible to, um, put the, the shaped trees further up on the property, and requires a condition of site plan approval, the trees have been maintained and managed, and that.
They're not asking for relief in putting up trees, they're willing to put up the street, they just don't wanna put it on the easement, they want it on their.
Right, and they don't wanna create the easement, that's how.
What's the reason for that? I know what you're saying, but I just don't understand the reason.
Any kind of easement, it covers the property for, 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 it's always gonna, not on the property, so it's a restriction, you know, we're willing, we're willing to put the sidewalk in, we agree to that, we're willing to put the, the street trees in, we just don't want the burden of putting the easement in, we're, part of the site plan approval, that, the property owner's gonna maintain the trees, so there's no reason for an easement, that's why we're saying, please give us the design waiver for no easement.
So this would still have, did you have a plan there that shows where the trees were located for your site plan approval?
Yeah, so this is the exhibit we passed out, so you can see along Masser Avenue, we have, uh, agreed here, there's street trees that we're willing to put in, we just don't want the encumbrance of the easement, for the.
What's the, what's the reason, I, I'm not getting it.
So it, it's a financial burden to go and do the process of putting an easement in, then it gets on the property for now and forever, there's an easement there, there's no reason for the easement, we're gonna maintain the trees, we're gonna put the trees in, so.
You, you, you're recommending approval, it says, uh, that the, uh, the township will have the ability to, uh, approve, maintain, et cetera, as, as required, notwithstanding that it's under property, as, in the site plan.
In the site plan, yes, yes, so, you know, the idea is, in your ordinance, it puts the burden on us to, to prove the trees, to maintain the trees if they die, or, or we need to replace the trees anyway, so we agree to that condition.
Terry, is there anything I'm giving up by this?
No, no, um, we spoke with the engineer about this, as part of this particular request, um, it's my understanding that even if you wanted to keep the easement, put the trees typically where they are, approximately to the property, you've got utility that's there as well, and it's in your interest on this project to move the trees back further.
Yes, correct, on, on the front, here's our property, uh, there's overhead utility lines, so if we put sidewalk and trees in, the trees grow into the utility lines, they gotta cut, cut anyway, so we don't wanna have that.
Fine, I get it.
Move this back further on our property and not have any.
Should've said that, now I get it. Okay, any other questions, or any board members on this? Anyone from the public wish to be heard on this application?
Both of you.
Signal, close into the public, I'll entertain a motion on this.
Move to approve.
Second. Second, local.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Brewster.
Yes.
Kevin Diamond.
Yes.
Mr. Reddick.
Yes.
Mr. Hallman.
Yes.
Mr. Yerser.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Could you please, I email us about that exhibit?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
SC, I'm sorry, SC twenty-five twenty-four, Mindy Pillar, it's a minor subdivision to create four lots, but it's not for new building a lot, so let me explain the details on that.
Thank you so much, good evening once again.
Ready? Yes, let's go.
Mary wants to, on behalf of the applicant, Mindy Pillar, um, to explain this application, it's for minor subdivision approval, to subdivide a portion of two existing lots, subdivide off portions of existing lots thirty-two point twenty-one and forty-six point oh-one, in lot two fifty-one point oh-one, to create a new lot, known as lot thirty-two point twenty-five, that lot, which will consist of approximately three thousand square feet, will be sold by the township of Lakewood to the owner of existing lot thirty-two point twelve, Mr. Pillar, into which the new lot will be consolidated to enlarge the backyard of his existing home, resulting ultimately in a newly created lot that would be approximately, or will be twenty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-five square feet. Just to explain a little more, both of the lots that, the pieces are being subdivided off, but as I said already, are currently owned by the township, um, one has a store work basin on it, the other one is complete, is completely vacant, um, what is going to have, the township has actually already passed the ordinance, um, to sell this piece of property to Mr. Pillar, the township will be getting paid for this piece of property. This lot, again, the newly created lot, that will be the undersized lot, and the lot, the only lot that has variances, that one is required by township ordinance to be consolidated into Mr. Pillar's lot.
So now, for two seconds, it's gonna be a small lot, and then it's gonna go right away into his lot, so that he can put a pool there. Open up.
I don't know about a pool, but he's enlarged, it gets back there.
Excellent.
He's enlarged, it's a yard.
I don't understand that, in, in order to buy a piece of property from the township, it has to be its own piece for a second, and then automatically it's consolidated in his lot.
And just one more piece, the piece that's gonna be for a second is an undersized lot, so we are requesting variances for that lot.
That one second.
Immediately consolidated, and the one second is over, the variances are all moved.
Okay.
Then I'll ask that Brian's one.
Get it? I don't even need Brian.
Yeah, I'm not.
Okay, anyone for the public wish to be heard?
I have your variances.
So you wanna get the variances on right here, but we got it here. Anyone for the public wish to be heard on this application? What? Oh.
You should get the positive and negative.
I can do one minute, Brian.
I don't know, John, ventures, watch your, we're smart group. Thank you. So I tell the truth, the whole truth, and that's about the truth, I do, right, my engineering, I'm a professional engineer, and planner, the application, as indicated, is for, uh, the pillar slot on the end of Serenity, I, I had that highlighted in pink, the little blue area is the area that's being done, I have it on three other renderings, uh, but, the, uh, position statement says encourage development, redevelopment, this doesn't, I have a copy of the ordinance from the township, where they're paying thirty thousand for this little piece, if you want that introduced in ordinance, uh.
Do you want that in the instance, Mark?
The, the variances are C two variances, the management plan says they're good, the municipal engine is on day eight, six forty-four fifty-five D two, the act says, uh, encourages, uh.
Okay, you're done. Motion on this application.
Hold that.
Moved, we have a second? I'll second it, local.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mr. Brewster.
Yes.
Kevin Diamond.
Yes.
Mr. Reddick.
Yes.
Mr. Hallman.
Yes.
Mr. Yerser.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much, good night.
A couple of minutes, all in favor? I, Cooper Billups, all in favor? I, we're in turn.
Uh, Chairman Rowan, June seventh was supposed to be our first June meeting, uh, back in January.
Which was on June seventh?
Back in January, we talked about another's elections, and we can't hold our meeting that day, so we have the option of moving our meeting to potential following Wednesday, and having a meeting two weeks in a row. Your recommendation of time was just not have the first June meeting, and just have one in June, wanted to know if that was still a general consensus?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's, I want to see again, thank you.
All right. Oops.
Yes, we did, June only has one, yeah.
Oh, my goodness. Good night, everyone.
Good night, you too.
Good night, everyone. Hi. Right here. What is, but, you know what, I understand, it was. It's like he could be on the way, yeah, I don't like.
Actually, it wasn't a minute, it's only.
Well, you, the board going to pick up the pace, which was appropriate.
Right. My whole, my whole, my whole, my whole. Right.
Okay, I, I was not calling this, I thought you were shopping, you were looking at socks or something.
I was. I thought you said looking at socks, I was like, oh.
You killed all new.
Yes. This is the, the.